Good evening and welcome to the Jersey City Board of Adjustment. This is the regular scheduled meeting for the zoning board for August 11, 2022. It's a little after 6:30 PM. We're coming to you via Zoom electronically in accordance with the Brendan Behr Act that allows us the Open Publics Meeting Act, which allows us to meet in this state. I think Francisco will go into it in more detail, but notice of this meeting was provided to a whole host of newspapers and other local access locations to, you know, allow the public to have awareness. But we can start with a call to order, Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance, sorry, Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. Okay, any sunshine announcements?
Josh, for the moment, we
I know we we lost Sonya.
Yeah, so we only have three now. Which is not a quorum.
Yep.
So, Francisco, do you know how to contact Sonya to see if she's coming on or Kim? I don't know by the number.
Yeah, actually, let me see if I can find their number.
Do you want to go off the record for a moment?
Yeah, why don't we do that? That might be a lot easier.
We're off the record.
I'm going to also email Kim again. Oh, Sonya emailed me. She said she can't log on.
Can she use her phone? Sonya, I don't know if you can hear us, but you can call in the number two.
I see Commissioner Green and the attendees in his hand raised.
So I sent Sonya the entire link that has the phone number, so hopefully she can dial in.
Actually, Commissioner Green, how are you, Kim?
Hello, how are you? I was just having a difficult time getting in to the call. Sorry about that.
No worries. Kim, I was having trouble as well. And maybe Sonya's.
Is there is there something that comes out that's just a button that you press join and you get in?
So it's usually an email, and then from the email, they like they have either the option of calling in or a link. And once you click the link, it'll take you to like Zoom.
As a panelist, or do we have something that is specific to us as commissioners?
Yeah, so the panelists.
So you're saying it's on the agenda?
No.
You got an email, Kim, you would have gotten an email.
I notice a lot of times when I do send it, it goes to my, on Outlook, it goes to the other, like, there's focus and then there's other. So usually when you send out the links, they go towards the other.
It's and Kim, it's from Zoom, it's not from Francisco.
Yeah, so I'll show you. I'll show my screen really quick, just. So this is how it usually looks. So it'll get sent over here.
Yes, click to join in.
Yeah.
Right there, click to join, okay.
Yep.
And it's from Zoom, it's not from you.
No, yeah.
Because I'm trying to put it on my calendar so that I did have to look for that and I don't have to search for email.
I actually, let me see.
It actually goes right onto my calendar. I don't know how it does that.
Outlook calendar or Google Calendar?
I have an Outlook calendar.
Okay, I would like that to happen myself. That'd be great.
I'll look into it next week so that I can probably add the entire link, so it's easier for you guys to just click straight into it.
Click on the button. Okay.
So Josh, now that we have a quorum, you want to just go through the resolutions real quick?
Yeah, sure.
Wait till Sonya gets on and we can do, well, we don't actually need Sonya for 121 Ferry Street, but.
That's true. So yeah, we'll see if she's there when we get there. Yeah, but we can continue kind of at the top. I don't think, yeah, any sunshine announcements, Francisco?
Yes. In accordance with the Open Publics Meeting Act, notice of this hearing has been given to the Jersey Journal, the city reporter, El Especialito, and posted with the city clerk on Tuesday, August 9, 2022. We have notices to be marked.
Okay, this will be one for today's meeting in evidence.
Thank you. And can you please take roll call when you're ready?
One second. Oh, I see Sonya. Okay, Commissioner Patel.
Yeah.
Commissioner Park, oh, I don't see. Commissioner Silva.
Yeah.
Commissioner Green.
Here.
Chairman Jacob.
Yeah.
There are four commissioners in total.
I also see Commissioner Park and the attendees with their hand raised.
Let me promote.
Hi, everybody.
Hello. Hello, how are you?
I'm great, how are you?
Hello.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you all. I sat in silently on the last meeting, so I didn't know I needed to raise my hand.
No, you should get a panelist email from Francisco, from Zoom.
Well, then, next time I'll get that and I'll hit on panelists.
Okay. Did you? Did you ask? Yes.
So somebody can do that for me? I'm not sure who's the attorney here.
I guess I am the attorney here.
Excellent.
How are you, Veronica? So Veronica, do you swear or affirm that you will vote to uphold the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of New Jersey, and follow the laws as applied, especially in this land use cases?
I do.
Thank you, dear. Well, welcome aboard. Now, is Veronica a full member or is she an alternate? I have no idea.
I mean, it doesn't matter for now, right?
Oh, no, no, it doesn't matter for now. I'm just wondering for my own notes. I haven't, I wasn't informed that we're getting another commissioner. Well, good, great.
I believe she's alternate one.
Alternate one. Very nice.
And Francisco, did you take Veronica's name down for roll call?
No, Commissioner Park.
Here.
Okay, so there are a total of five commissioners today.
Great.
Well, one, two, three. Five, great.
Okay, thank you. And Bridget, can you swear and staff when you're ready, please?
Hey, do you swear or affirm the testimony or comment you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, I don't see Sonya.
No, no wonder what.
It's we'll proceed without her. And Commissioner Park, you don't need to be sworn at that point.
Yeah, I figured that out, yeah.
Any correspondence, Francisco?
Uh, yes, let me show my screen. All right. So there is one item that will be carried to the first meeting of September, September 8. It is item number nine, case Z21-069. The address is 329 Sip Ave. The applicant is 331 Sip LLC. So they will be carrying with preservation of notice to the September 8 zoning board of adjustments meeting. And then all other items remaining for the evening will be, they're going to continue. I'm
Thank you. Francisco, do you know if Gerard is here?
Yes, I did see him in the attendees.
Okay, if we can proceed with that first.
Okay.
I think we should do that because then if Sonya joins, great.
Promoting Gerard.
So we'll proceed with case Z22-005. The address is 121 Ferry Street.
Bridget, just so the record is clear, this is a notice case. We have the notices of proof of service and notice of publication. Excuse me, and we'll mark it A1 for this application.
Okay, one moment. A1 for this case.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening. How are you, Jerry?
Good, good to see you, counsel.
Same here.
So Francisco, I have one witness, Alan Feld. He should be on.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. And as we're doing that, counsel, I think you may have, I think it may have, you may have marked it already.
We did, we marked the notices, they're fine.
Thank you, thank you. So, good evening, Chairman, good evening, commissioners, with your permission.
Let me just, is Ms. Aracho here for the record?
I don't see her, Bridget. I mean, I see her on the screen, but I don't.
Okay.
We don't need her for this, it's. See variants.
I'm sorry for the interruption.
No. No worries, that's important. So thank you, Bridget. And good evening again, everyone. My name is Gerard Pizzillo. I'm an attorney with Genova Burns. I'm here today on behalf of the applicant, Mr. John Elifthrow. He is the owner and resident of 121 Ferry Street. It's known as, also known as Block 4401, Lot 11. It's located in the R1 zone. It's currently an existing two and a half story, four unit building, which Mr., the applicant resides in one of the units. The proposal before you is, we're requesting to construct a deck in the rear yard. 296 square feet is the proposed dimension, or total area of the deck. But because this is an undersized lot, it's approximately 2,300 square feet, it's 24 by 92 in dimensions. The proposal triggers a few variances. Specifically, the rear yard, the rear yard setback, where the required is 24 feet, and with the deck will be at 12.6 feet. Then there is the front and rear yard combined setback. And in the R1 zone, for something like this, the total setback front and yard combined would be 35 feet. And our proposal with the deck, the combined setbacks are 24 feet. Finally, the third variance that we're requesting as a result of this is for building coverage. And we're at 60% now, which is the required percentage. The deck does slightly increase the building coverage by 6%. So we would be at building coverage of 66%, and that triggers the third variance. I have a very brief testimony from Alan Feld, who is the architect of record, who designed the building. He can run you through what the proposal is, and then we'll be happy to answer any question the board members have. But that would be the sum and substance of our presentation this evening. So with that said, and as an ease to Alan, I'm going to share my screen with his plans and he will testify as to the plans. So that being said, Alan, I'm going to share my screen now and we'll get you sworn and you can explain to the board what we're proposing this evening, okay? And now just make sure you're muted, okay? Just make sure you unmute.
Could you raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, and state and spell your full name for the record.
Alan Feld, F E L D.
Thank you.
And Francisco, if I may, Francisco, can I just have access to share my screen?
Yeah.
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, Chairman.
No, no.
I knew what you were gonna.
Great, get that. I was just gonna say, Alan has been before the board many, many times, we accept his qualifications. Thank you.
I don't know that word.
Okay, okay, I'm good, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so go ahead, Alan, if you could walk the board through what we're proposing here this evening.
So as described, the existing lot is 25 feet wide by 92 feet deep. And in the rear, we're building a one-story deck, which is 12 feet deep, which would be, this deck is for the second floor. So since the lot is undersized, it's not 100 feet deep, it's triggering three variances. One is the rear yard, the minimum rear yard, which is 20 feet. And we're going to have 12 and a half feet. The other one is the overall front and rear yard. It has to equal 35 feet, and we're going to be undersized with that. And the other, the third variance is for lot coverage. Existing lot coverage is 60%, and with the addition, it's not really addition, it's the deck we're talking about. There's no structure here. There's no roof, it's just a deck. The lot coverage, though, is 66%. And one of the features of this deck is we're going to have the side of the deck is going to have walls that are seven and a half, seven foot, four inches high to minimize any disturbance to the neighbors. And actually, the neighbor to the left is a parking lot, and the neighbor to the right is a residence. And again, this deck would serve just the second floor. There's no stairs to the rear yard. We're converting the two of the windows into doors. There'll be lights on the deck. And I just want to mention also, there is already a one-story addition on the ground floor, which actually does exceed the depth of the 12-foot deck that we're proposing. But that's going to remain as is. And that's, that's basically it.
Chairman, I don't have any other specific questions for Mr. Feld, if the board has any questions.
Does anyone from the board have any questions at this time? Is there anyone from the public that has any questions or concerns regarding this application? So again, only specific to 121 Ferry Street.
Chairman, at this time, I see.
No hands?
Yes, that's correct. There are no hands.
Okay, so let's close the public portion. Any staff comments?
Um. Oh, I don't know if you can see me.
Oh, you want me to stop sharing?
Yeah. Yes.
So I think, just to reiterate, the lot is undersized. We're typically, our one lot, the standard is 25 by 100. This lot is 24 by 92, approximately. So it, in total, it's 2,300 square feet. In addition, both the rear yard minimum and combined front yard, sorry, both the rear yard minimum and combined front yard, front and rear yard setback are in direct correlation with the hardship of the undersized lot. So the building is complying with front yard requirement of meeting the predominantly set, the predominantly setback, and it also limits the ability for the front, sorry, for the applicant to meet the rear yard setback because of the front yard being 11 feet. And that's pretty much it. It's pretty standard. I did set conditions that are pretty standard to applicant, applications like. So basically, we recommend all materials and color selections to be shown on the final plan. It's a deck, so I don't think that would really apply. Only if they're changing the design or, you know, the site plan. And pretty much, yeah, that's it.
And for the record, I did receive Francisco's staff memo with the proposed conditions. I did review them with my client, and they are all acceptable to us.
Great. Does anyone at this point have any questions, either for staff or for the applicant? And if not, does anyone want to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve case number Z20-028, and that's address 131 Prospect.
I think, Kim, we're on the next one.
Okay, I'm sorry. Correction to that, Z2205, 121 Ferry Street, to approve that with conditions.
A second. Does anyone want a second?
I have a second, bro.
Commissioner Patel.
Hi.
Commissioner Park.
Hi.
Commissioner Silva.
Yes.
Commissioner Green.
Yes.
And Chairman Jacobs.
Yes.
Motion carries all in favor.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great night. Okay. Thank you.
Have we tracked down Sonya?
So I emailed her, well, maybe about five minutes ago, and sent her a shorter link, maybe that.
Well, we have, we have five commissioners, right?
Yeah, that's correct.
Do you want to ask Bianca if she's okay with us proceeding? With five commissioners for what's listed as 10 on the agenda?
Promoting Bianca.
There I am. Hi, everyone.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
I understand the board only has five members.
Yeah, so the question, question for you is, do you want to proceed? You know, that means you need unanimity, but.
I know.
Unanimity in life, right?
Right. I think we're prepared to go forward, and I think five members would be sufficient.
Yes.
Great.
Fairly straightforward.
So then we're going to proceed with case Z20-028. The address is 131 Prospect Street.
And Bianca, just so the record is clear, we have your notices, your affidavit, your proof of service, notice of publication, and Bridget, I lost you, and oh, there you are, up there. We're going to mark that as A1 for this application.
Thank you very much, counsel.
Comment, please. A1 in evidence for this application. Okay.
Good evening, counsel, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. May it please the board, Bianca Pereiras, on behalf of the applicants for Prospect Street Capital LLC. This is for property located at 131 Prospect Street, also known as Block 4905, Lot 15. This property is located in the R1, where one and two families are a permitted use. However, we have a legal three family. The application before the board this evening is to legalize a fourth unit that is existing. We have two experts to testify before the board this evening. And if appropriate, I'd like to begin the presentation with our architect, who I do not see in the room just yet.
Who is the architect, Bianca?
It's Manuel Pereiras.
Okay, I'm promoting him now.
Thank you.
Okay, and before I swear you in, Bianca, could you say the block number again?
Could I say what I'm sorry?
Block number?
Block is 4905.
Okay, that's different than what's on the agenda, so which is correct?
4902.
Oh, my apologies.
Okay, and Mr. Pereiras, would you raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do, Manny Pereiras, P E R E I R A S, with Pereiras Architects Ubiquitous, 1116 Summit Avenue in Union City.
Now, I believe it's been a while since Mr. Pereiras has testified in front of this board. Would the board like to hear his qualifications?
It's your presentation, if you want to, whatever you want, if you want to say that Manny's license is current in the state of New Jersey, and he's a licensed architect, I'm good with that, but I also am happy to hear as much as you want to say about his credentials.
Mr. Pereiras, could you briefly tell us a little bit about your credentials?
I'm licensed and it's current, and I hope the members remember me. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, we accept your qualifications.
Fantastic. Mr. Pereiras, are you familiar with the property at 131 Prospect Street?
I have, we've been working on it for a while.
And you prepared the drawings there before the board this evening?
I have.
And would you kindly describe the project for the board?
I'd be very happy to. May I have access to shared drawings?
Of course, give me one second.
Thank you.
Okay, you should have access.
Excellent. Um. It's lame. Excellent. What you see before you, if the screen is sharing properly, are the same drawings that were submitted before the board. The latest revision date is in April 14 of 2022. As counsel mentioned, we have a pre-existing structure of three family. What we're looking to legalize is a fourth unit. And as you could, will see as my presentation moves on, is that there are particular conditions to the site that make that appropriate, as well as several modifications that we're doing to the site to justify our request. The first and foremost, if you notice, in the size of our lot, whereas a typical lot is 2,500 square feet, this lot is 28.25 feet wide by 200. So it's significantly larger. It's at 5,674. That's a very unique condition to this lot. And I'd like to explain how that site is used. The subject property is at the center here. The subject property is at the center here that were that I'm outlining, and currently, there is a space between our property and the adjacent property, and there's an existing easement that allows vehicles to move between the two buildings and park in the rear. So as you could see, there is parking for seven vehicles in the rear, plus two more in the garage space. The, what we're proposing is to make no changes to the footprint of this building. However, significant changes to the site uh right now, and if you look at the existing conditions, it is a hundred percent asphalt. Yet there are these pads that I'm pointing out here that we are going to take advantage of those pads that are basically striping right now and break them open and create grass areas. One, so that we could uh reengage the aquifer uh and uh a little bit, as well as beautify the area with a little bit of greenery, uh some grass and some shrubs, which I think is a significant improvement to the rear yard. There is also an existing fence that is chain link along the back. We're replacing that fence with a vinyl fence to be a lot more attractive. And then the front of the property, uh currently, there are, there's an area where there are a ser- actually, I'll I'll amplify that a little bit in a second. Let me move to that drawing so that we can see exactly what's going on in that front area. Right now, you see the existing condition on the left, the proposed condition on the right. Uh there are these uh burns or these uh small retaining walls that are filled solid with uh with pavers. We're looking to break those open and introduce grass areas in in these areas here. And then we're looking to significantly improve the facade from what it looked like, looks like currently, which is uh at some point, there was vinyl siding that covers the cornice. Uh there is a rock that was painted over in the facade. We're looking to significantly improve that uh by stuck going the base of the building. Removing all that vinyls that was along the top and replacing that with uh a wood a synthetic wood like AZAC panels, so that we have a white AZAC trim that really beautifies that front facade a lot, and of course, replacing that dead area with landscaping, as you could see along the front of the base of the building. And we do these things uh as a justification and as a as a give back to the community to legalize this ground floor apartment. If you could see, the existing conditions are on the ground, on the lower part of my sheet, and the proposed conditions are on the upper part of my sheet. First and foremost, there is a stairwell that ha- connects the upstairs apartment to the downstairs apartment. We're looking to demolish that area. We're looking to demolish um sorry, I was in the wrong sheet. Here we are. We're looking to demolish that stair that connects the two spaces. We're also looking to demolish the existing kitchens. Uh washer dryer and the existing bathroom that's there, because we're going to introduce handicap compliance. And the bathroom that we have proposed, it will be an ADA compliant bathroom on that ground floor. And we're removing that kitchen to create additional space, and we're relocating some of the doors to make it uh a better apartment. We're isolating the foyer. This is the main entrance to the apartment. And in this foyer, it's isolated before you had doors that led into bedrooms and then to your apartment. That's all going to get cleaned up so that we have a mechanical area. And then we have an entry, a proper entry to the apartment. That proper entry has bedroom number one and bedroom number two. And then the living dining room area, it's actually very beautiful as is, has a beautiful glass uh partition across there, and that's going to be maintained with the upgraded kitchen and bathroom to meet ADA standards. There are a lot of uh life safety issues that will be presented and done with uh during the construction uh process. For example, we're going to pre-increase the size of the windows for them to be emergency escape and rescue windows. We're going to provide a one-hour rated ceiling separation to separate this area from a fire area, from the areas above the apartment. There will be a a low voltage alarm system located in the common areas, and a one-ten volt uh alarm system throughout the apartment, uh significantly improving uh the life safety conditions of all the inhabitants of the apartment and and as a function of that, the neighborhood as well. I am open for questions. I could speak a lot more about this project. I think this uh this actually gives you a good overview and leaves it open for Charles so that he could talk in particular about the variants that will be questioned.
Hey, um can we hold questions to the end of the presentation?
I'm here, I don't.
Okay, hi, Charles, would you raise your right hand? You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And just state and spell your name for the record.
Yes, Charles Height, last name is spelled H E Y D T.
Thank you.
And I'm very sorry to interrupt, but I believe Bianca was kicked off, and she's trying to log back in, if you could accept her. If it doesn't work, that's okay. We have a backup. She's in the same office as me.
Switch chairs. That might be a lot easier.
I think so.
What happens now?
My apologies.
That's okay, Bianca.
Mister Height. Yes, are you familiar with the property at one thirty-one Prospect?
I am, yes.
And did you have an opportunity to review the drawings prepared by Pereira's architects?
I have, yes.
And would you kindly describe this project from a planning perspective?
Yes, hi, good evening, board members. Um.
Good evening, Charles. I assume your license is current. Um we accept your qualifications. Continue with your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um uh just for the record, I am a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I'll be covering the the planning proofs for this application. Um we did review the plans with uh Mr. Perez. And um from a planning perspective, there are a a few very uh important unique aspects. So um with the four units being in a one and two family zone, the R one zone, we are formally requesting a use variance. Um that's a D one use variance based on uh case law in the state. We are trying to meet the uh Medici standard, which essentially is referencing the particular suitability test. When I say particular suitability, what I mean is what are the um particular attributes about the property that would lend itself to be used as a four unit in this case, rather than a complying one or two family uh residential home? So uh a- as was mentioned earlier, the the property is substantially oversized. Um it's twenty-eight and a half feet in width, and it has a tremendous depth, twice the minimum standard um where one hundred feet is required. Uh this property is actually two hundred feet in depth. And as you can see from the plans, that allows for um a a compliant building footprint at the front of the property, as well as a substantial parking area in the rear. Um the parking helps offset some of the uh intensity with respect to the added units. Um but it's part and parcel of this particular property. Um we are not proposing any uh physical improvements to the footprint of the building, so there's no increase in mass. I think that's important to note. Um and no, no further encroachments in any yards or or setback areas. Um when you look at uh density, we did uh uh look at the density on the property and the surrounding areas um from some of the new commissioners tonight. Um the R two has an implicit density. It's not a requirement, but it's implicit, given that two units are typically permitted on a lot that's two thousand five hundred square feet. When you do that math to turn it into eight uh density, it's about thirty-five units per acre. In this case, for this application, the four units over a lot size of five thousand six hundred and seventy-four square feet is thirty-one units per acre. So we're actually less dense than what you would typically find as a permitted density, implicit density in the R ones. I think when I, when I recognize that, it's it's a really telling uh of a very balanced project in terms of number of units on the property. Um we are are also looking at adjacent properties in terms of context. Um so the proposed multifamily use is in context and consistent with adjacent uses, specifically on this block. Um actually, along this frontage at one thirty-seven Prospect is a three-unit property, one thirty-five Prospect is another three unit. One thirty-three is a four-unit development, and one twenty-nine is a three-unit development. They all have similar densities that range between thirty-one and upwards of fifty-two units per acre. So again, while we're in the R one, this stretch of pop Prospect between central and Lenai Place is actually relatively more dense than than what the R one would would normally permit. So um that tells me again, it's it's consistent with the neighborhood. That was really speaking to the to the use. Uh I do believe that the uh improvements in on the site plan, um the the fence, the landscaping, uh formalizing the parking areas, uh utilizing that easement, the shared driveway are all unique attributes of of this property that would support the use variance. Um we, there is a non-conforming condition with respect to, uh well, two non-conforming conditions. One with respect to um maximum lot coverage, we're actually increasing or decreasing the non-conformity with the proposed landscaping that was spoken about. Um and then with respect to the minimum floor to ceiling heights, there were sections of that lower level um that were less than um the nine feet. Um we're making that all a a standard uh floor to ceiling height of eight feet. So again, that's increasing that uh non-conformity, while it's not the nine feet, it's still a a comfortable floor to ceiling height on that lower level. That's all the relief that's being sought tonight. Uh I do think uh the the use variance is met. I do think that the both uh variances while pre-existing are being improved um with respect to the land use law. Um I do think that the population is appropriate. That's further in purpose E. Uh the improvements with the landscaping and the facade are further in purpose I, which is promote a desirable visual environment. The the negative criteria, um no substantial detriment to the public good. Again, the whole point of this application is to improve the function and safety of that lower unit, uh that that proposed fourth unit. Um and I think uh the architect covered a lot of those improvements with respect to the interior of the space. Um so as far as the the number of units goes, I don't think there's a substantial impairment to the general welfare. Um with with respect to the zone plan or zoning ordinance, again, I covered the majority of the rationale uh in the positive criteria. Um what's being proposed is very consistent with the neighborhood. There are improvements being proposed to offset the the impacts, and I don't see this as a as a substantial impairment to the zone plan. Um that's my testimony. Uh I believe I'm available for questions or Bianca, if you have any questions that I I come up.
I do not have any for you, Mr. Height. We have no further witnesses or experts this evening, so we're open for the board's questions.
Great, thank you. Does anyone else from the board have any questions at this time?
I'm the newbie. I have one question. Um besides the the windows being enlarged and the alarms, are there any additional safety? Considerations that went into convert this conversion? Mr. Pereira can address that. Mr. Pereira, are you still on mute?
Thank you. Yes, there are several additional things that we do from a life safety standpoint. Uh in addition to the eight-foot ceilings, the special alarms, the enlarged windows, there will be a what's called a domestic line sprinkler system for this unit. Uh in expanding uh the use to uh in an R two structure, you'll have that fire suppression system uh in this uh in this unit, which is a significant um life safety measure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else from the board have any questions at this time? Okay, um Francisco, is there anyone from the public that has any questions um regarding this application for one thirty-one Prospect Street?
Yes, I see one hand raised. I am promoting Robert.
Good evening, this is Robert Pentangelo. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. We can't see you.
I don't know why that uh is I have the I know if that's on my end or on your end, but I'm uh okay if the chairman's okay with me just giving uh presenting my question um.
Richard, are you okay? If you can't see Robert, I mean, I think that's fine. We just, you know, sworn in slightly differently, right?
Um he is an officer of the court, so I believe I do not have to swear him in, Vinnie.
That's correct.
Okay.
That says he's a lawyer. Yes, is he a lawyer? Yes.
I am a lawyer.
Good for you, Robert. Congratulations.
Um if I may proceed to ask, uh the one witnesses.
Yes.
Um Mr. Perez. I am the attorney representing um Center Rentals LLC that owns the property at one twenty-seven Prospect Street in Jersey City. If I under- I understand from reading the summary of the application um that you, your uh client is intending on converting a legal three family to a legal four family, is that right?
That is correct.
That would be the basement of uh and what would be added, the fourth unit would be the basement the basement of that building, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay, um now, I believe if I remember your presentation correctly, that there are seven existing parking spaces for that property, is that right?
There are actually nine parking spaces existing on the property. Seven are open air on pavement, on the asphalt pavement, and then there are two in a rear garage.
The three units, uh the three existing units, are they currently rented?
I do not know.
Maybe I could address this to either Mr. Height. Does he know if uh the three uh current legal units at that property are rented or not?
No, like they don't have the status of of occupancy.
Can Council maybe advise us?
I actually don't know if they're currently rented at this time.
I I wouldn't see a reason why they wouldn't be. And when I inspect, I went to the property, they were rented. Are they rented at this time? I don't know.
How, when was like, when were you there?
Uh several times over the past year.
And what was the most recent time you were there?
Probably about four months ago.
Okay, and the three units were rented at that point, is that right, sir?
Uh I believe so. There were things in the apartments.
All right, do you know if uh the nine uni- the nine parking spaces, were they in fully in use or not?
I do not know.
So Mr. Pentangelo, uh where are we going with this? I mean, you're asking lines of questions. Is your concern, my my client is two is is down the street uh and uh I think there'll be insufficient parking for a fourth unit.
That is a my concern.
Okay, great. And I think we we were able to sum up your concern.
Very good.
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome, sir.
And I, I'd like to remind the board that we have nine parking spaces uh for four units. Uh, there, there's. Uh, more than two parking spaces per unit plus an additional parking space. I think that is more than sufficient parking for our proposals.
Just, just to follow up, the board knows the standard is generally a one to one ratio. Uh, and we are also using a shared driveway, which is an efficient curb cut where it serves to multiple properties.
Okay. Great, thank you. Uh, any other questions or comments from the public? Okay, then let's close the public portion of this application. Um, staff, any comments? Or, I mean, Bianca, I don't wanna uh overstep, but if you have any, anything else you would like to say in, in comment uh from yourself or your experts. Um, in response, but I don't think you need to.
Just on behalf of the client, I want to thank the board for the opportunity, the time and the consideration.
Great. Um, any staff comments on this application?
Oh, yes, I can show my screen really quick. Okay, um. So as for the D one variance, the tax records from nineteen thirty-eight indicate that the building was constructed in eighteen ninety-five. The building. Was and continues to be three stories and contain three legal units. When evaluating a D one use variance to permit an additional unit in the R one, site su- suitability is evaluated. With five thousand six hundred and seventy-four square feet, the lot is considered oversized. The overall bulk of the structure is also applicable when evaluating site suitability. The rear, front yard and side yard setbacks are conforming or pre-existing conditions. Unit sizes are considered when you, when evaluating site suitability. With the average square feet of the units being one thousand one hundred and eleven square feet, the building layout provides for a pro-. Appropriate unit sizes. The proposed improvements to the front rear yard. Promote and a desirable visual environment as well as the front facade. Um, and as for the C variance, the existing building has a non-conforming maximum lot coverage. Uh, the proposed action will continue this condition, thus requiring a variance. Staff recommends approval with conditions outlined in my staff report.
Thank you. Any comments? Or questions from the board at this point, either staff or um. The applicant? If not, does anyone want to make a motion?
Mister Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve case Z twenty oh twenty-eight. Address one thirty-one Prospect Street with conditions.
Uh, second.
On a motion to approve, Commissioner Patel.
Yes.
Commissioner Ark.
Hi.
Commissioner Silva.
Yes.
Commissioner Green.
Yes.
And Chairman Jacobs.
Uh, yes, and, and I just would like to say um that. I, I, I guess I'm, I'm a little taken aback by the concern about parking um raised by neighbors. Um, it seems like there's. More than, more than enough uh parking. And, and I guess I would like, again, as I have many times signaled to the staff. That um, this is a location um in the, you know. Lower heights that's less than a mile from uh Journal Square Path. That's less than a mile from um the uh Second Street Light Rail stop. That's half a block from Central Avenue. If this presentation were bought, brought to us and had no parking, I think it would have passed. And it has nine parking spots. So, yes.
Motion carries all in favor.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too. Good night.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Thank you. So, board, stay on, because we're not done.
Yes. We need to memorialize resolutions and then we have to go into an executive session.
Okay.
So, the resolutions first? Yes?
Yeah.
Okay, the first uh. Resolution to memorialize uh the first two were heard on May twenty-sixth. There were seven commissioners on May twenty-sixth, Chairman Jacobs. Commissioners Donley, Green, Cruz, Patel, Arroyo and Coyle. The first case is Z twenty-one dash zero four nine. That was uh, the applicant was Nadeem Akhtar, A K H T A R. The address is ninety-seven Clifton Place. Proposed conversion of a two family to a three family with a four-story rear addition. That was for D and C variances. That passed all in favor. All in favor of memorializing that is I.
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 And the same uh, another case uh that date was for uh block one oh three. Oh, three lots fifty-five point oh one and fifty-seven point oh one. Bridget, I don't have the uh, the case number on that. I'll give it to you tomorrow.
Okay.
It was uh, again, heard on May twenty-sixth, same seven commissioners. This also passed seven in favor and none opposed. It was an application for preliminary and final major site plan approval. With D and C variances that, that passed all in favor. All in favor of approving that is I.
I.
And the next one was heard uh on a special meeting on June seventh. That was the uh. Case Z nineteen dash zero five zero. That was uh the St. Peters Prep uh School. That was the appeal from a denial of the application for a certificate of appropriateness by the HPC. And there was a motion to deny the appeal and prevent demolition of the building. And that passed six in favor, one opposed. In favor of that resolution was Chairman uh Jacobs. Commissioners Arroyo, Green, Brown, Patel and Maney. Uh, the, the opposing vote was Commissioner Shadid. It's all in favor of memorializing that.
I.
I.
And the next. Application was heard on June ninth. That was case Z twenty-two dash zero zero one. The applicant was IT one oh one LLC. That was a C variance for thirty-four Randolph Avenue. Uh, that passed five in favor, none opposed. Commissioners that evening were Chairman Jacobs. Commissioners Donley, Shadid, Green and Cruz. All in favor of memorializing that is I.
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 And the next uh case was heard on June twenty-third. Z twenty-one dash zero nine five uh fix and flip Newark. Uh, one and two LLC. A minor site plan approval with D and C variance for seventy Gardner Avenue. Six commissioners present that evening. Acting chairperson uh Donley. Commissioner Shadid, Green, Patel, Arroyo and Coyle. That passed six in favor, none opposed. All in favor of memorializing that.
I.
I.
And uh, the last case is Z twenty-two dash zero three two. Jackson Towers LLC. It was an expansion of a minor site plan approval. I'm sorry, an extension. Of a minor site plan approval with C and D variances. For five seventy-three, five seventy-seven Jackson Avenue. Present on um July twenty-eighth. With Chairman Jacobs, Commissioners Donley, Coyle, Silva, Brown, Patel and Green. And that passed seven in favor, none opposed. All in favor of memorializing that.
I.
I.
So uh. Can we make a motion to move into executive session so we could discuss this one bit of litigation?
So move, Chairman. Sure. Motion to.
Move into executive. Second.
Yeah. Good. Is that uh good for instance? Sure. Okay, great.
Do we want to close the meeting? Is there anything else we needed to discuss?
I don't think so, no. I think we just want to formally make a motion to close the meeting and say goodnight.
Make a motion to close our meeting for tonight.
Veronica, you're seconding that?
I'm seconding that. I just wanna, it's a pleasure to meet you all and obviously you got to know me a little bit. I'll try not to talk so much.
Veronica, what we'll say is that the pleasure is all ours.
Thank you.
And asked, asked a lot of questions. Always like, you should not feel bashful about speaking up.
No, I will. I'm not bashful.
Great.
Thank you.